...school committee meeting to order at 7:37 and ask you to please rise for the committee members.
...................................................... Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda, pleasure of the committee.
Motion by Mr. Donatka, second? Second. By Mr. Dunin. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries six to zero and noting for the record that Mr. Salvatore is absent this evening. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, approval of minutes for regular meeting, eight twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, executive session, eight twenty-eight, two thousand fourteen, enrollment report from nine-one, school police report of eight-one, and residency truancy report from nine-one. Pleasure of the committee on the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second by Mr. Fiorella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six to zero. Next item is the report out of the executive session meeting from nine-eleven, two thousand fourteen. There were no votes taken at that meeting and I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mrs. Teal?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fiorella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda, Dr. Thorpe, superintendent, report retirement recognitions.
This evening we have one retirement, Miss Castillo, a Cumberland resident, tried teaching back on February fourteenth, about nineteen eighty-six. So twenty years in Cumberland, mostly at the L's. Just a huge amount of appreciation with the Cumberland COVID ad that we have to retire because of the $100 million. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is funding formula and the BEP. I will defer my comments to the later discussion on new business for the RFP for BEP compliance and the funding formula impact. Does anyone on the committee have any questions? We had left the last time talking a little bit about per pupil funding and the newly released items. No? All right. Next item on the agenda is report of standing committees payment of bills. Mr. Mutter?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This committee met earlier late afternoon and at unanimous vote approved payment of bills in the amount of seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars and forty-nine cents. And then we pass it.
Mr. Mutter moves passage of the payment of bills. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorella. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries six to zero. Next item on the agenda is policy and procedures, subcommittee update. Mrs. Teal?
We need this week, we'll be meeting in two weeks, six-thirty Tuesday, our usual time of day.
Thank you.
Oh, I just have one reminder. One of the policies that will be on the agenda is the school committee, called Cal Natural, but they would be quite others. If you have any questions, concerns, I would invite you to continue.
Mr. Donatka? I did it again. You seem to forget. All right. I apologize for that. Let's go to fiscal management, subcommittee update.
Thank you, Mr. Donatka, Madam Chair. Fiscal management, Matt, as I stated, late this afternoon, early this evening, we did discuss amongst others the Sedexa report which showed a hundred and forty-two thousand dollar profit this year, which will go to the food services fund, which is the designated fund. We discussed the budget amendment process and hopefully you have some intent of getting a policy in place that would make that a two-meeting endeavor in the future. So we'll be putting that together, are we putting that together and submitting that to go through fiscal or policy or both. We talked about designated fund balance and whether or not that can be done after the close of the fiscal year. We're informed that that can be done. And on the discussion, our vote to approve RFP, real estate funding formula impact improvement, backslash BEP compliance, we did have some discussion. Assuming I will take any actions, I can, but we will discuss that further. Thank you.
Thank you, and my apologies for skipping over the very important agenda. I do have a question about fund balance. Can we transfer dollars to fund balance at any time? I know there's a point in time in which we have to make funds available and there's a deadline in which we open it up. Can you talk a little bit about that, Mr. Fiorella?
Well, you would transfer, you would transfer funds to some of those designated areas at the end of the fiscal year when you knew what those, you know, what your operations, you know, results operations were. I can designate money like in August, this is one of those things, not knowing how the rest of the budget will play out.
Okay. Thank you. Next item is achievement and communications, subcommittee update. We did not meet on Tuesday. We will meet in a few weeks alongside policy and likely for fiscal on Tuesday, two weeks from Tuesday. Next item on the agenda is comments from the public. Does anyone wish to speak this evening? And I just want to acknowledge our council members, Kearns, Mr. Murray, and Mr. Schrempf. Thank you for joining us. Kearns, I think I said, well, Mr. Kearns, yes. I can say it again. Welcome, Mr. Kearns. Next item, new business, discussion and our vote to approve an RFP or downstate funding formula impact and improvement, BEP compliance. We had discussed, as many of you are aware, the concerns that we've had about our BEP compliance. And in addition, we felt that there are certain aspects of the funding formula that are becoming or continuing to be problematic for us. We believe that we need to bring a solution to the table and that we need to have an understanding of where we do, where we are compliant and where we may not be in the compliance area. If you look at globally, it tends, more monies are needed for high school programs than elementary school programs. What you find with our per student dollars is that's actually the opposite. So as a lot of us have talked a little bit about, you know, what the high school does or doesn't offer, some of the general feeling in the community is that it doesn't offer the services for all students, so kids who may be going into certain trade areas. We know it's struggling in its technology offerings for engineering and mathematics and we're beginning to explore that. But, you know, I think it raises another concern around the topic of, well, what is our school program required to have and what are we funding? And we also know, in addition to that, that there is the obligation for the charter school and that their enrollment is at, it's about halfway point. So the tuition requirement for them, if they double tomorrow, would double for us. Additionally, there's also the requirement for the local share to meet what our local share is. So there's a continued obligation in that regard. And then lastly, there's been discussion around what the local obligation really is. And it varies from community to community based on the need. And we want to be certain that our students do receive the appropriate funding. We're in kind of a complicated issue with our two school districts and I think it's time for us to take a closer look at that. And I know, Mr. Mutter, that you had talked about that in fiscal and I didn't know if there was any other points that you wanted to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think what began my consideration here and on the docket actually for a discussion about potentially developing an administration to develop an RFP was the, this fact that the town had contributed the maximum, pretty much the maximum, the last two, three years and that the state funding had gone up, but yet our per pupil expense going down and how that could happen. And so, you know, as I said in fiscal, it's my belief that the money follows a child and that was an easily understandable concept. And I think, you know, everyone would agree that you shouldn't receive funding when you're not providing service. So the funding formula is kind of, you know, obviously it's a complicated formula with a lot of cases to it, but, you know, on the basic level, that makes sense and that you should certainly have different opportunities. You have them in every other aspect of life and why you wouldn't have it in education. I think it's a difficult argument to make, but I obviously support the fact that you should have a choice and that they should be good choices. But the fact that the money follows a child is not a one-to-one correlation in that the savings don't follow, you know, the revenue that goes with the, with the child to whichever school is a fit and that family decides if it's a fit for that child. So, and then the, especially here in Cumberland where most of the dialogue is spent on where the entity, where the money goes, where I don't feel that's beneficial to anyone in the long, over the long haul. I believe that it's in the formula and that, you know, tiptoeing, as I said, in fiscal, I'm not saying that anybody didn't think about it, I think they probably did, but I think that the choice here is at a different level than it is in other communities and that when it gets to be a fairly sizable number, that gap is much more difficult to bridge, if we will. So, you know, my thought is that to ask us to go develop an RFP in which that can be measured, that the difference between the money following the child and the savings not in respect or with respect to the BEP, which of course is, you know, might be, yeah, I don't know if it can actually be done, but I'm forever hopeful on things like that. So, but, you know, if you believe that we are not providing the BEP as it is legislated that we do so and that we are to propose a budget that does, then, you know, we ought to try to find out and it's that we're doing our job. But I do believe that if we're not, I think that that gap is responsible for most, and to not address that and to go to the town every year when they, if you're, if they're providing you the max that they can and it's still not denting the per pupil expense, we're just going to keep rolling down this road every single year. And all it does is, in my mind, at the very least, it doesn't create confidence amongst the community. It doesn't create any sort of community feeling towards education. It pits people against people, which I don't think is the goal, was the goal, or should be the goal. And we need to take the heat out of some of that conversation and make sure that the playing field is as level as it can possibly be. So my thought is that we would develop the RFP to see if we could measure, like, I think all stakeholders could benefit because, as I said in fiscal, if you're a leader that believe that there should be more choices, it's been proven already that there are going to be some communities that feel that that's not in their best interest because it may take revenue or resources away. And so that's going to eliminate possibilities of choice. So it would, I think it benefits all parties involved, that that gap be addressed and as well as it could be comparatively speaking to the BEP. And in that way, you'd have a professionally done study or report or something that you could take to whether you have delegation, I think it obviously would be at the beginning, to see if you, if, as this funding formula has now been rolled out and that there is still maybe some tweaking to be done. I don't think that that would be unexpected with a legislation of, you know, that size. So as opposed to just hoping things get better or pointing fingers, my feeling would be to try to get to the point of where it might be lacking. And I think that that's a, I really do believe that there's a gap there that can, that's understandable and that can be proven. And I think that all people who believe that you should get the same fair shot will see it. And so I'd like to see us try to find it as opposed to the, you know, the other. I'm always one of these people that we keep knocking on the door, we didn't get the answer the last, the first couple of times or whatever, so I just move to the next door. I'm not, I'm not one to throw my hands up and say, well, you know, if that didn't work and, oh, well, what was me? I think there's a gap. I think it, to reiterate that, I think it would benefit everyone who has an interest in their education, whether here or anywhere else in the state. And I'm advocating for us to try to develop an RFP that could get us closer to that. Thank you.
Mrs. Teal?
With the intent of this RFP to also to understand our local share obligation is if we fund the basic education program to also answer that question? I mean, I understand the intent is to try to answer the question of the impact of the charter schools on our budget and what's the shortfall in the core funding formula, but a component of that core funding formula is the local share. Is that also part of the intent of this RFP is to answer that question?
Well, I can say that. It can be, anything can, anything that seven people or four people vote for can be part of anything that you want the administration to do. So it certainly could be. I think that, you know, we, we kind of pushed that issue or we did push that issue. And I don't think it's, I think it's valuable information and I think it would, by, just by its natural progression, will come up. I think that, you know, Rod didn't want to take a stand on that and, you know, that was disappointing, but I think, I think as you would go through the BEP and the fact of, and the formula and how it was derived, I think that it would be naturally part of it anyway. But I, but I do think that when you're sitting on as a mayor or town council and you're at the max, now granted, you didn't, there were historical things that happened that are, you know, that have an effect now, just like anything else. But once again, it's time to move on to make, it's time to, to stop, you know, how we got here is, you know, always is valuable, it's a good discussion, but, you know, how we get to somewhere to me is a little more valuable where I would be at this time. But I think, I think would naturally happen. But the long, I mean, the short answer to that is whatever anyone went on that RFP, as long as they have three of their colleagues to vote for, that's what they're telling us.
Anyone else? I'll just end by saying, I think at one point when we met Rod and it wasn't the aspirational conversation or any subsequent conversation, it was really in the beginning when we started to raise concerns, they said to us, prepare for both. And if you get your head around those three words, you understand that your responsibility isn't just to build your own stronger program, but it's to address the concerns that are being raised. And this is certainly a concern that's been raised in the community. You feel like you're either, you know, on one side or another. We can't talk about it. We can't, we can't be happy for one another because you, many people in the community, and not all, feel that there's, it's a struggle and it's a challenge and it creates a lot of tension. If we have a means to address some of it, that we can bring locally forward, that we can bring forward to the general assembly, it's a solution. And it's really up to us to say, we think this is a good solution. It's then up to the, you know, the dignitaries in town to decide this is a good solution or it's also up to the general assembly possibly, if they're willing to have the discussion with us about some of the pitfalls or the strengths of the program. I think it was put in place for good reason, but like anything, when they passed it that many years ago, this, this wasn't really an issue for us. And now certainly funding is a, is a big issue. So I would expect we'll have probably at the next meeting, something drafted. So if there is specific input that members want to provide, I would work with Dr. Thorpe and Alex and Jeff and myself just to try and get that together so we can get that going on. Anything else?
I'm sure.
Mr. Mutter?
I mean, you know, the whole idea behind it was, was that it didn't matter where you went to school, whether it be Kentucky or Barrington, Wesley, wherever, that you were entitled, I guess, for the word, a lot of the better word, to the basic education plan, but in, a basic education program, which is a little popular now, they're both saying, it's true. But, and it should matter where you go to school. It shouldn't matter even inside the community. I mean, I think they looked at it per different communities, but it shouldn't matter if you go to Garvin or you go to BVP or you go to whatever school you go to. I mean, you know, there's this, if, if the funding formula, you know, by its passage puts money to, follows the child, that's not the fault of where the child goes. And too many times, you know, here, that's where the energy has gone. It's been vaulting where it goes. It's not, it's just not the proper place. Those are taxpayers in this town that make that choice and they should, you should be able to make that choice. And it should be berated for making it. And it should be berated for how the money goes there because we didn't design that. Nobody did design that. And actually, nobody in the town, it wasn't a town vote or anything of that nature. It goes there because that's the legislation in which we deal with. So if there's a way to make that, and the question, and all I'm saying right now is I don't know, but certainly it would be looking for us to take a positive vote to investigate it because, you know, it is, it is a resource issue, but it is a community issue as well. And, you know, if we're going to be who we want to be ultimately as a community, we're going to have to put this thing to bed. And so hopefully it shows that, and I think it will, that there is a gap there and it's a gap that means something. Anybody who wants to, for all the kids to succeed, should do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, facilities update, projects completed, planned, and outstanding. Dr. Thorpe?
Yes, you have three documents in front of you that we can take you through. Myself, the first document, if you look at it, says capital included in 2015. The second one, entitled FCAP summary, have a larger document. The last one we look at is capital projects remaining authority. To start with, we can take you through the capital included in 2015. Essentially, we want to tell you about what's been already completed or underway this year in capital. Certainly the list of any capital, you know, item project is not all inclusive, we always do more. And as we go through, there's certainly for yourself, take notes or maybe you think, you think we should move up on the list and kind of shift around. So if you have a pulse check so far of where we are, I'll do Ashton, I'm going to jump in Alex. You have had a lighting problem at Ashton and now it's completed. Parking lot was rather dark, so now through the Ashton school, it's a well-lit parking lot that was taken care of. The float, the float I was taking care of there, some rug replacements, some roof flashing was done, you know, leaking the car that was addressed at Ashton, and also some landscaping sweeping completed. We still have outstanding refurbishment of the energy management system. That community, a lot of issues around ceiling tiles, a lot of dated tiles, so that's on our list focused, a real comprehensive, big, big bite at that. Slap to our dumpster is on our list right now this year, a playground fence. We did remove some bushes. Many schools you see bushes that were probably rather old, it was high and they get very big, almost unmanageable. So stage one was to pull out some of the large ones and plant some this fall that are more manageable. That's happening in many of the schools, in communities, one of them. Landscaping and sweeping, blinds in the community, a lot of ones with, something simple as blinds, but in that building, it's a problem, that's our, this, this fall. Once again, the energy management system and once again, I've seen planting enough some trees. Cumberland Hill, if you pull on Cumberland Hill, you'll see some issues with curbing. We did some work on that last year, but some of it remains. That's a pretty costly venture to do with curbing, so we find a little bit each year and that's on our list. Security cameras, looking for more cameras still around the playground area, I believe, to kind of isolate those areas. A screen in the auditorium, the screen's not functioning right now in the auditorium, we talked about fiscal sub, I don't know. The chimney being repaired is on our list, landscaping again, some vinyl siding. At Garvin, we did do, or in the process of, I'm sorry, doing the carpet at Garvin School. We did finish the carpet at North Cumberland Middle, but Garvin's carpet also needs to be replaced. It has a weighty effect, if you will, in the libraries, that's being done. Drainage for playgrounds completed. And once again, the energy management system conversation. Return to page two, BF Norton, chimney repair, we talked about that in fiscal sub, the chimney BF needs some major attention, a new library carpet, extending the concrete sidewalk. Cafeteria tables completed, landscaping also completed. McCord's, more cameras. McCord's done a lot of work in terms of a facelift, if you've been in there, the entire inside's painted, but now the last phase of that is actually painting the blockers. So that's on our list right now. AC and several rooms completed, that's great news, also AC and the lab, that's completed. The roof facade is still, has some problems. The canopy, the old slab canopy at McCord, look closely, we did replace the woodwork on the outside, which we'll round, but the interior boards are still probably original, have to go taking down. So it's very problematic. That's on our list for, for this year. Let's see, here. North Cumberland, the intercom system's an interesting story. My channel's kind of like our MacGyver and with that one, the intercom is probably circa nineteen eighties. We've had different issues with cutting outs and whatnot, but this past week we might get another go at it. And we think right now we can probably still keep the intercom. A lot of wiring gets loose and as Mike explained to me at my level, if one wire is not working, if you will, it can kind of short the system. So we're going through all the wires, we're going through that phone and it's still, it's a worry.
Christmas tree.
Christmas tree. It's a worry for not being replaced at this point, it's on our list. Our red carpet residential was completed. Boiler, new curtain for the stage, you want to knock on the middle and look at the felt curtains, you would be concerned. So we are taking care of that, so that's, that's happening. High school, we saw last month the grid work, that's completed in front of the building of the pool area, so that was completed. Whiteboards are being completed. The wellness elevator is on it because it's always a concern, it breaks down a lot and it's not no reason why it does, but it's just on our list, it's an recurring problem, so we have to keep that on our list. AC in the offices completed, hydropot side completed, landscaping, that's the town going up right ahead of that. And once again, boiler. Now the last page, are things on my mind or Alex's mind that we don't have in the list yet, but concern us would love to put them on the list, but some of them have big prices associated with them. It's not all inclusive. I prefer to you to tell me what else you want on this list in terms of moving forward. Ashton, we have a beach gym floor bubbling, ceiling tiles, grids. Like your new school, window repairs, a lot of dated windows with large gaps, especially old windows in the community and it's kind of problematic in terms of replacement because when you do replacement of those windows, they're old and if you don't do replacement, you're going to run into PCD, keys to the window, they can take the windows out, it's that whole process. So mindful on how we do it and when we do it. So that's on our list. Look down further, the driveway exit, I think Mr. Mutter and I walked a couple of years ago around the community, looking for maybe a second exit out of community's parking lot because problematic with traffic flow, so if you have a second exit, that's around $10,000 ticket average for your sense of what caused for that kind of thing. Cumberland Hill, once again gym floor issues, curb repairs. Garvin, we have windows, BF power washing, we're really impressed, yes?
Can I ask you about the gym floor bubbling? Is that in the new PE space? Is that new?
Yes, the two jumps up or adding on a few years ago. Those are, um...
Do we know what the cause of that is?
No, it could be, it could be, not sure, but we're looking into it. No, it could be, it could be, not sure, but we're looking into it. We just, we noticed that when we went out on inspection this summer, so we've done it on the rest, we tell it, we get to the bottom of it, happy enough to do that.
And that building space, about five years it's been there?
Well, I think it had a date, so, maybe six, not much longer than that.
Thank you.
Power washing, actually power washed the high school, that, we're really happy with how it looks. So we have it on our list now, also BF being the same kind of style to power wash BF, which is a great, great improvement. Parking at BF is certainly a concern, and that's on our list. McCourt, gym lighting, leeches, canopy I mentioned. Un events, the heaters at both McCourt and the high school are very dated. Remember last year we had the freeze issue, and when they pop, it's a series of units that all pop like a chain. And I asked, I easily walked to get a new one, we can't buy it, you have to just kind of solder or, what's the word, term?
Yeah, they solder the coils inside, but the coils are sort of lotted, instead of having, you know, six rows, some of them only have two or three rows, so.
Right. As learned at McCourt especially, it was told to me in a simple way, where it's almost like a one relay system for the entire McCourt area, maybe two relays. The high school may have, say, forty or fifty zones. If one zone goes to McCourt, it could take out half the building, one freezing event. So it's on our list, certainly, it's a concern on the unit event conversation. The boiler exhaust at McCourt, north gym lighting, once again, unit vents, lighting. Wellness center, the AC, we're still having issues with the wellness center in terms of temperature regulation. Also the windows, if any kind of storm or rain comes, we get flooding in the wellness center all the time for the window areas. That's been reoccurring, yeah. Yep. So some brickwork, some screens. There's a practice field, I was talking to our new AD about this, and we've just been thinking about it. I mean, I know the practice field behind the high school for a lot of the sports teams, it's really not something that we, we have to look at it now, it's really problematic and kind of hard to the surface, if you will. We have to really look at probably a protocol for the fall in the spring in terms of tilling it, moon, seed. The challenge is irrigation, and you run a hose out that far, the water's just so low and can't get a point out of it. We have to probably work with the town to probably split a hydrant, if you will, to tap into it to irrigate it. So that's on our list. Also, I'm talking about turf in that community school, if you look up at that, where the kids would play in that large field, same conversation, that field really is what I would call playable. It's our rough surface, we're talking about moon seething and really, we're taking care of that. Those are things that we, you know, typically don't get to because they're not really super cheap items to get to, but they're on our list. And also, I can't not mention this, my channel, the backup generator, a lot of tours that we have, so it's our V8 engine in the back, backup generator for this building, especially the computer noise center over here. It's actually okay to keep that, I've been told, for lighting. It has the right configuration for lighting backup, but as Mike explains to me, if you run by company, it has the wrong frequency of a wrong connectivity to backup computers, those are my words. So we use it, last time we had power outage, the generator would pick up it, and it might give me a chance once and when we're down, and if that room heats up, that's our server level. So we have to look at a separate dedicated, probably smaller generator and keep that one for lighting, it's old but it works, testing regularly. We didn't hate a new generator for the computer out there. So that's the first list. Any questions on that?
I'm just sad that a lot of these items, the SCAD pretty much are not budgeted. A lot of other items, we're just doing it as we find these things, and at the top, you see that we have our own capital budget, which has four or so thousand dollars this year, and we also have the SEDEXO budget, things budgeted also. Between those two budgets that we manage and that SEDEXO budget, so it's just, we're looking at and say, we don't have the money for this, it's all some allocation we have in SEDEXO, so to speak.
Mrs. Teal? At community school, Simmons layup for the dumpster, has that drainage ever been dealt with over there? Kids haven't been there in a while, but that dumpster area, that back door used to be a flood zone, is that resolved now, or is that part of this project?
It's not part of this project, it was just to get the dumpsters because I suppose it's not sitting grass and stuff, it's to get, it's an slab over there, so if they would be, you know, sit the way they should, I'm not aware of that problem, I haven't had any.
Maybe it's been resolved, but that back, by the jam used to.
It's not, it's not.
Holy shit.
Did they move it out?
Okay.
You don't want a dumpster by a back door of a school with all the slab and put it awful ways, in the heat of the day, it could be not a pleasant experience to dump stuff by the back door, so.
All right.
Second document, just the FCAP, kind of the same conversation broken out in pieces, Alex, anything you want to talk about?
Yeah, well, the second act, finally, next thing we should go to is the capital projects sheet, the one page of, and that's the kind of lead in to the stage one, stage two, applications that we need to apply. The capital projects, the main authority, originally there was a three and a half million dollar party that had back many, many years ago, adds to June of 2013, and this tied in with the student funding, and ties in the bribe, we both have the same exact number. It was a billion six fifty-nine in that, I don't know. Projects have it completed in fiscal thirteen and fourteen, you can see total of three hundred and fifty-one thousand, leaving a million three oh eight left for its authority. And remember, it's an authority, it's not money, it's just an authority we got. And on that authority, they'll reimburse a twenty percent reimbursement that comes in on school construction. If you look at our proposed projects for fourteen and fifteen, with the two big ones being the two high schools, the two wellness high schools, and the six hundred thousand dollars, you can see what we're leaning, you see how the public is two hundred and seventy thousand for security draws, there's another three hundred and fifty thousand that hasn't finished that project, so between the two fiscal years, there'd be a million two thirty-five that we'll use this year. Not even count some of the things that I hear that, you know, what they do as the year design. It's going to leave us with authority under seventy-two thousand dollars, so starting next year, anything we do in the area of capital will not be reimbursed unless we get this stage one, stage two, that application to stay approved. And I guess that's the next thing on the agenda. What I did is, I implicitly found the book, is the application, the stage one application. And if there were fourteen different tabs and different questions that they asked, and I think we went through it when I was telling you some of the type of things they asked, you know, that we provided, some of the things we're able to answer now, and in the stage two process, things that we don't answer in stage one, we can answer at that point. For example, they ask for plans and costs and feasibility studies, but we don't even know what projects we're going to do yet because we don't know what kind of funding we'll have and stuff. So we're certainly not going to go out and have a pie or hot cuts a bunch of years of, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars a project, and maybe not get a project even off the ground for a year, you know, two, three, four years, you know? Things will change and the rest of it. So you have that opportunity in the stage two piece. So the good news is we first stage one application, we have the building committee, that's a part of it, that's a requirement to have when you go forward with these applications. And we hoped to send this now, open up to the state, you know, to ride, to their, to accept it. And what we'll do is take on a meeting with the committee to stop going with projects and the rest of it. There's still a moratorium on it, so that's, you know, so we want to at least get size right so that if the moratorium is lifted, we can go forward with some of those projects. The FCAP study is part of that, and that's a summary that we'll talk about. What I just basically did to make it easier, because the FCAP will pay down a page, you know, and what, I just tried to take and summarize it, and I did it by HVAC, plumbing, electrical, setting through interior items, and so it goes down by school. And if you go to the back, you get an idea of some of the big items, the total is twelve million nine, the FCAP study shows thirteen change, and some of things were completed, so I took them off. But you see some of the big things, for example, the court roof is a big one. We have asbestos well through some schools, some schools have no issues, some do have asbestos gas, we don't have any issues, but in the FCAP, at some point, you would think you'd want to replace these tile, these asbestos tiled floors and stuff like that. And we've got that, we've got the cost of that scattered throughout the five years, mostly in the later years of this project. Some of them you may never do, you know, because it's still fine, it's still in good shape, you don't have to, but it's something that, when SEDEXO does a study like this, they kind of take like, what should you apply for something? And they're kind of like, you know, this is floors are down here thirty years, you know, at some point you're going to have to address it. So you think like asbestos, plumbing, electrical, the HVAC, windows, so some of the big cameras, these things kind of pop up at many of the schools, so I just kind of stuffed over those big ones, but, you know. So that's basically the FCAP summarized, but, you know, hopefully we get this, we can get this FCAP, you know, up to the state, that it's free to apply to some, I ended up traveling up tonight to the, to various committee members, so you'll have it. The one thing we soon need to get done, and, you know, we need to get a letter of intent from the by the town, the school committee chair, and the superintendent, and so I worked with Brian Silver to try, Sylvia to try to get that letter signed by the mayor at this point, maybe mayor-elect, Murray should be on there because many of this stuff will be under his term, I'm not sure how, if he has to or not, but, you know, certainly the mayor, current mayor has to. And then the other thing, you know, that we need to, you know, the moratorium, the moratorium to be lifted, so we can, the legislature on paper a couple of weeks ago was in the sunny paper, it was one point eight billion dollars in school construction projects that are just sitting in the state, essentially going to be the next prices for schools in Rhode Island, because, you know, hard to sit here and reckon that, gee, we'll spend half a million dollars on a roof, and then in eight months, they lift the moratorium, and like everyone's saying like, you know, I can reimburse, what did you do with, why didn't you give us that? You do it, not do it, you know? So things of emergency, you know, reimburse immediately, and things that, you know, maybe not qualified as emergency, you know, need to be done because, you know, they're not high cost, but just, you know, they need to be done in the district, you can't wait, we'll have to do it. Certainly things like replacing roofs and major projects, that was one of the reasons why, you know, the, when we did the pool building, we pulled out the repointing at this time, it was seven one thousand repointing, we sealed it, we cleaned it, we did the cracks and the work, and the really, you know, expansion and stuff, but we pointed the whole building, we left off, because it was under seventy thousand dollars, and it's going, you know, eventually you're going to have no allocation to do anything, so that'll be the next, that'll be the next prices to the schools. Take a look at the FCAP, we hope to get it up to the, get it to the state shortly, and I mean, not the FCAP, the stage one application. You have a year from the stage one application to switch to stage two, I think we'll try to fast track it and not take over a year. And we've had some discussions with the leadership, we've asked the finance director now to take a look at what the debt services in the town, how debt service may be dropping off as bonds they paid off, to get, to get an idea of just what size bond issue we may hope to maybe be able to, you know, have put on, have put on a referendum for school improvements. And once we get that kind of figure, we can then size these projects and have an idea what are our priorities, you know? Thirty billion dollars, do everything, but I would recommend that because some of those things you won't have to do, we won't have to replace, you know, plumbing every school in the next couple of years, that type of stuff. But we certainly need a good chunk to start doing some of the things that will, you know, need to be done and will lead to more costs than more than they sit in just in worst condition. So if I have any questions, if people haven't seen this before, the stage one application, but if you take a look at it and have any questions, you know, we can always have another discussion with this in a, you know, another meeting back over a few weeks, so.
Question? Is the, the stage one application time sensitive? Is there a deadline, or is there some priority around?
No, it's nice to submit, I would like to try to get it at sort of stage two, three, if we just couldn't get it, but I, we didn't have a building committee put together and stuff, but at that point, because a lot of communities expected the moratorium to be lifted, and there were a lot of communities going in, and basically what happens, they can't say, no Cumberland, yes Lincoln, no Providence, yes Fort Tuckett. So when a lot of communities usually go in, it's usually they all get passed, you know, that type of thing. It's, I guess it's good to go into recovery, you know, that type of, but, you know, the big thing is that you have just a year from when you do get it, to do the stage two, to do all the, you know, feasibility studies and all the things I'm dealing with. I will go through the questions, I did it one more time with you guys, and I'm sure people, you know, feel like standing, we, we, you know, section five, you have to put your, but, you know, and we can, you know, have a go, and we can discuss it about a little school, maybe you have questions, maybe you have, you know, a quick thought.
Okay, thank you. All set? All right, moving on. So we've talked about projects completed, planned, and outstanding, and we've moved to stage one application, but we don't need to vote on that as a committee, that's just what we move forward as an application. Perfect. Next item, discussion and or vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the fourteen, fifteen school year.
Recommend approval, that is indicated.
Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussions? All those in favor? Who's opposed? That carries six zero. Thank you. Next item, personnel recommendations. Mrs. Fumpel.
Thank you. So I just have appointments for you this evening. Sorry, Chris gave advice and consent to the school committee on the following appointments. Denise Burco, student management clerk at the Cumberland High School, effective August twenty eighth, twenty fourteen. She's a full-time employee, she's an ICSI employee, so her co-pay is ten percent. Rodney Cody, custodian nights at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August twenty fifth, twenty fourteen. Again, he's an ICSI employee, his co-pay is thirteen percent. Gina Deguano, supervisor of nursing at the Cumberland School Department, effective nine fifteen, twenty fourteen. Ms. Deguano is already an employee with us, she's already a school nurse teacher, so we're just adding on Ms. Staitlin, she's been hired as the new supervisor. Roberta Duran, custodian nights at Cumberland High School, effective August twenty fifth, twenty fourteen. Again, he's an ICSI member, his co-pay is thirteen percent. Janelle Garnow, science teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective nine three, twenty fourteen. She is a point six, step one, with a twenty-two percent co-pay. Sarah Emgut Godino, not to be confused, we have another, C. Godino, which will be interesting going forward. Spanish teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective nine eight, twenty fourteen. Just for the committee's knowledge, Sarah Brady, who was the Spanish teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, was originally a French teacher. So when Madame Shaw retired, Ms. Brady wanted to go back to teach French. So she took French, so we hired a Spanish teacher, which is actually much easier for us than finding a French teacher, so, so we hired Ms. Godino, and we're very happy about that. She is full-time, she's a step seven, she has a master's, and she's at twenty-two percent. James Marsland, custodian nights at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August twenty fifth, twenty fourteen, again, an ICSI member, he's one of the new custodians, we've based thirteen percent co-pay. Caitlin Oler, she was already on your request, but I had initially appointed her as a point five, but after a conversation with Mr. Demana and with approval from Dr. Thornton, she's been increased to a full-time employee based upon needs with the new CHIPS program, so I brought her forward for you so you would know that now she's a full-time employee at step one. And lastly, Sarah Polari, math teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective nine eight, twenty fourteen. She's a point six at a step one, and she's twenty-two percent. And I guess besides that, I don't know if you want, probably don't take those, and then I'll do the coaching, sorry.
Student, none of the coaching.
Sorry about that.
No worries. Pleasure of the committee.
Motion to approve the personnel.
Motion by Mr. Fearwell, second by Mr. Gannon, to approve the participants. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Are they?
Who's opposed? And that motion carries six zero.
Then he has second, secondly, I'd like to request the appointments outlined in Chris Tagian's, the athletic director's memo dated August eighteenth, twenty fourteen, for the fall coaches. The majority of the coaches are rehires, with the exception, I believe, of the North Cumberland Middle School boys soccer coaches, who are both new hires and are certified.
You said they were.
Are they all of them, or?
You said they were certified.
They are certified, yes, I'm sorry, but they are new to us.
Thank you. Should we read these into the record? Or are we going to? I don't, I don't think it's required.
I'm afraid about pronouncing some of their names.
And let me ask you, does this satisfy all of the, this is for fall?
Yes.
Correct?
We have no outstanding fall coaches, all coaching positions for fall have been filled.
And this is for the high school and the middles?
High school and middle school, that's correct.
Okay. Pleasure of the committee.
I'd say I'd like to watch when we will put the Commonwealth's Fall Coach.
Mr. Demana can move his passage, show the second. Second by Mr.